I call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council, Legislative Session Number 2023-19 for October 3, 2023. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Delegate Carl Anderson in the back there. We have other guests tonight who we'll be bringing forward this evening. Be delighted to meet them. Entertained motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Approved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections?
I just had a question about, we have the appointment for the airport deputy director.
Hang on one second. We're in the middle of a motion, discussion on the consent agenda. Is this in reference to the agendas? Is this a reference to approving the minutes?
Oh, okay. Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, no, I just had a question for the other.
Hang on a second. Let's just want to get through this one first. Thanks.
I'm fine with the rest of this on the agenda.
All right. Just so that I'm not misunderstanding you, are there any items within the consent agenda that you have an issue with?
No, not the consent agenda.
Okay, cool, good, very good. Any motions taken? Sure. Any for the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motions carried, consent agenda passes. James, what was your?
My question was, it was just a clerical thing. I just wanted, I guess we have the appointment tonight for the deputy director. I just didn't know if that was supposed to go, you know, if we were supposed to discuss that in a work session or anything before, because it's a...
I'll give you the options. It's on here as a resolution. Mr. Rudy asked for it to be on here as soon as possible, so we can get everything back together in the report. Your option would be to make a motion to postpone if you wanted a work.
No, 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 no. I mean, I would like to...
We'll have discussion.
Yeah, I would like to have discussion with him, absolutely. I just wanted to, I just was asking.
Okay. All right. At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize national domestic violence awareness. Sorry, I'm trying to get everything together here. To recognize national domestic violence awareness and Prevention Month. Ms. Jamie Manning?
Yes.
She's not able to make it.
Okay, that's fine. Just let us know who you are when you get up there. Thanks very much.
How are you?
Hi. I'm Karen Hughes with the Life Crisis Center, and this is Maxine Hilliard.
So this is a proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abuse of behavior used to gain and maintain control over another, which can occur in a form of physical, verbal, or emotional abuse. Domestic violence affects millions across the U.S., regardless of cultural background, ethnicity, sexual orientation, faith, socioeconomic status, or educational background. And whereas domestic violence is never the fault of the victims and survivors, and the vast majority of cases go unreported, which leaves victims suffering silently in places where others consider the safest, their home, work, or school. And whereas we all have the ability to empower victims and survivors by offering resources, listening without judgment, and reminding them that they are not alone, education and awareness are also critical components in the effort to end domestic violence. Now, therefore, the county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourage all citizens to join the movement to end domestic violence by educating themselves, speaking up, and by offering support to the victims and survivors, done this third day of October 2023.
Thank you.
Now, we'll need this back, because we're missing that counsel. Do you want to do your picture?
Yes.
You want to get out front?
That's right.
Anything you want to say?
Oh, sure.
While you're here?
I do want to thank you. Domestic violence is in our community. We don't want to think that it is, but it is. One in three women and one in five men will be a victim. So in this room, there's probably several that could have been a victim. We at the Life Crisis Center in the past year have served over 1,300 people, and that includes adults and children. So we have worked with them. We work with them on the hotline. We work with them in the safe house. We go to court with them. We go to the hospitals and meet them there. And we also provide the treatment for it. So we are there to help them, but we need to prevent it so that we don't have to help them. But unfortunately, it is still a need. And I want to thank you for recognizing that, because that is what October is about, is so that we can recognize that we need to be there for our fellow people in our lives. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Penny Bradford, the Board President with Women Supporting Women. The proclamation will be presented by Councilwoman Shanny Shields.
Hi, how are you? How are you? It gives me pleasure and proclamation Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase the awareness of this disease and increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas research shows that clinical breast examinations and screening mammograms can help reduce the number of deaths from breast cancer among women, and whereas every woman is at risk for breast cancer, even if she had no family history or other risk factors for the disease. And screening and early detection of breast cancer are vital to the health and well-being of all women. Now, therefore, the county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourage all women to learn about their risk for breast cancer, talk to their healthcare provider about recommending breast cancer screenings, and be screened with clinical breast examinations and mammograms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got to take a picture.
Okay.
Okay, won't kill me? Yeah. Only one time. I just want to thank everybody for recognizing us, as Shanny said in the list that women have breast cancer, be aware that men also have it. And we are seeing in our, with our services, we're seeing more and more young women. We had a lady the other day, a couple weeks ago, 27 years old with three children. So it does not just hit the older ones of us, but it hits, and there's probably nobody in this room that hasn't been touched in some way by cancer. Wycomico County is really high in their cancer rate. So thank you for recognizing us and giving us this confirmation. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have a very special introduction. We have Dr. Deborah Casey here. You can certainly join us at the table if you would, please. This is our new president of Warwick Community College. I definitely... We did an extensive search, as everyone knows, quite an extensive search, and had three great finalists who ended up coming and visiting Wycomico County. And out of those three finalists, Dr. Casey was picked. Your last position was with Green River College at Auburn, Washington, from Washington State.
That's correct.
So you've come all the way across the country.
I've come home to the East Coast.
And we're glad to have you here.
Yes.
If, I guess you have the floor, whatever you'd like to share with us, as far as what you've learned over these last couple of months, and I know it's been a lot.
Yes, it's nine weeks. I've been here for nine weeks, and I am excited to be your new neighbor on the lower eastern shore. I grew up in Massachusetts, and I moved to Florida and was there for about 12 years, and then moved out to the Pacific Northwest and was, worked at Green River Community College for 17 years, from assistant dean to dean to vice president, and decided to come back to the East Coast. And I'm very excited to be at Warwick. I believe strongly in the mission of community colleges and that we are about making sure that there is access for all individuals that live in our community, and that we can help them get the skills that they need to either transfer to a four-year institution or go back out into the workforce and support our local communities. And so I am blessed to take the reins from an amazing previous president and become the third president at Warwick. And I look forward to more connection with each of you and growing the relationships and partnerships in deep-rooted ways that we can partner together to serve our community.
Any questions from anyone?
I've talked to her.
You have?
Already. She solved the problem. The young man today is very happy, and thank you very much.
Anytime.
We're really glad to have you here, because Warwick is a real integral part, as far as education in Wycomico County, more so now than it's been in the past, because I believe we're in a serious mode right now, where it had always been college degrees. You do your four years, go to college, find out whatever degree you may get, what future you may have. But I think over the last five to six years, it's become, we've recognized it's become very paramount for individuals to go into the community college and the workforce environment as well. You know, so many, I think so many younger kids, they think, well, I don't want to be a plumber. Well, you're not going to be a plumber. You're going to own a plumbing company.
Right.
Right? And we're trying to get that new mindset to really bring those people in. And I've been in several meetings with Tri-County Councils, the Lower Eastern Shore with Greg Padgeum, and Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, and the focus has been, the efforts have been doubled and tripled just over this last year alone, is how we're going to continue the great collaboration we have with Warwick Community College in those type of programs.
Absolutely. I mean, the college is comprehensive in that we work with transfer students, but we're also working with business and industry on what their needs are and how do we make sure that we can provide certificate programs and workforce development programs to serve local business and industry.
Right, very good. Any other questions or comments? All right, well...
Welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Casey, thanks for taking the...
Go Fins, wear the Dolphins, everyone.
Very good. Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on tonight's agenda is Resolution Number 129-2023. This is to approve Cheryl U. Brown Esquire and Davis Agnor Rappaport and Scalney LLC, a special legal counsel for Wycomico County on matters relating to the 2024 FOP collective bargaining. We have Mr. Bunky Luthman here, our Director of Administration, and we also have our former Lieutenant Governor, Mr. Boyd Rutherford. And Cheryl Brown is on Zoom behind me.
Thank you. You can come forward, certainly. Lieutenant Governor, very good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, and really appreciate being here. And just as a side note, I was glad to see the new president of Warwick Community College. I too am a big supporter of the community colleges. I've always thought it's the smart choice for a lot of young people and parents, but the mission that is not only preparing maybe some kids for a four-year, but also reskilling individuals, and doesn't matter what the age is, to go back and reskill and pick up those additional skills that'll be valuable in the workplace. So, big supporter, so thank you. Thank you for recognizing.
Certainly. And I understand also the opportunity and the positions that you have held before for the great state of Maryland, you recognize that Warwick Community College is the best community college in the state. I was reading between the lines.
You were reading between, right.
But we're very pleased to have you here. You've done great work. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I am here really to introduce my partner at Davis, I ignore Rappaport and Scalney, Cheryl Brown, who is an experienced labor and employment attorney. And we're here to, you know, seek the approval of the council to be retained by the county to handle labor negotiations with your FOP.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 129-2023.
Approved.
Motion second, fine. Discussion. We have questions.
Ms. Brown is here.
I'm here.
From our office.
I guess the attorneys that we have, that we pay on an hourly basis, we wouldn't need to use them anymore, or would we just use her?
What I would say it this way, we've been involved in each of the labor negotiations, but we need specialized counsel who's used to union contracts, union labor negotiations. There's very, very few unions on the eastern shore, and we've always recommended there be outside counsel to assist. Yes.
Other questions?
Do we know what we paid for this in 2021? You mean total cost? Total cost, not per hour?
I didn't bring... I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to talk to Pam.
Yeah. You know, it could be a very limited arrangement that we have now. We just revamped it three months ago, so it may be less than we really think we have to anticipate, so. Any other questions? Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 129-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motions carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 130-2023. This is confirming the appointment of Adam Gardner, C.M.A.C.E.A.S.C., as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation. And we have Mr. Rudy here and Mr. Gardner as well.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 130-2023.
Approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Is this what you had questions on, James?
Yeah, yeah. I was just, I was hoping we could have some discussion on it.
Certainly. All right. We'll give you the floor first, Mr. Rudy, okay?
Good evening. And again, Tony Rudy, Director of Aviation, and I appreciate the opportunity for taking this on the agenda on such short notice. As you're aware, I've been without a deputy since May of this year. The work does not stop at the airport. We're extremely busy lately with a lot of construction starting, and we also have our day-to-day items that I've been tackling on my own, and very happy to have had Adam apply for the position. I interviewed him the other week, along with Wayne Strasberg, and we both agreed he would be a good addition to the airport. He has a wealth of airport experience, of several airports, over 13 years of experience, and fairly similar background to what I had prior to coming here. I'd like to present Adam Gardner to you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, you have the floor.
I'd just like to add that, as Tony mentioned, 13 years of experience at airports on the operational level, ensuring that the airfields were safe and secure, airports ranging in size from 133,000 and plane passengers up to 1.8 million, one of the largest airports in what the FAA designates as the tier for small hub airports. I took a look at Salisbury and the vision that is set forth for the airport, and it's very exciting, and I'm very happy to be here.
Okay. Any questions?
Where do you see yourself in five years?
Right here. No, I certainly, I would like to stay, and as long as I'm impacting the aviation public and also the surrounding community, that's, I want to continue in the position.
I guess the only question I have is, what do you anticipate, like within the first six months, what do you really think you're going to grab hold of? You know, it seems like when someone new comes in, they always have a strong suit in one area or another. Just curious as to what you might think is of the most interest to you.
The most interest to me is the construction that's going on. I am aware of all the minutia, excuse me, the minutia that's involved with construction, and then you pile on TSA security, then you pile on FAA and environmental and whatnot. So I understand what ducks need to be lined up and have a lot of experience in making sure that all the parties that are involved in those type of activities, we're all on the same page. We all understand what the goals are and to keep those on track, because ultimately, keeping the airport safe and the airplanes coming in is first and foremost, and making sure that everybody's prepared to handle any type of contingencies and talk to the right people for answers to problems that come up.
Have you had a lot of inner workings with the FAA?
Yes, I have. I've actually been the operations manager in charge of meeting with the FAA and making certain that the airport that I was at was meeting its certificate requirements for passenger service.
Very good.
You guys don't have anything to do with the school, right? Is the school yours, or is that something separate from what you do?
No, the school will be run by UMES.
Okay, okay.
What the airport's role is, and SWEAT is basically taking on kind of the handler of the funds to organize a lot of the cooperation between the airport and Piedmont and UMES and pulling together all those pieces, so...
I didn't know if you guys...
No, we won't be running that at all.
Good, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 130-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motions carried, resolution passes. Congratulations, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you very much.
Very pleased.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, very pleased.
Pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Johnny.
I'll put him right to work.
All right, take off.
It's only 6:21. You've got another four hours at least. That's how it is in Wycomico County, anyway. Thanks.
It's great to hear.
Good, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Ms. Chatel? There you are. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Introduce yourself so that the public can still get familiar with who you are and what your role is, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I face this way or...?
Right here is okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anjali Chatel. I am the new internal auditor for Wycomico County. I came on board about a month ago. I am a certified public accountant in the state of Virginia and now Maryland, and I look forward to serving you all.
Thank you, appreciate it. It's the last time we'll have you do that. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution Number 131-2023.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. I'll give you the floor. Angie?
For the declaration of the internal auditor?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, Madam County Executive Giordano and President Cannon and council members. The Institute of Internal Auditors publishes an international professional publications framework. It comprises, comprises, sorry, the standards for internal auditing, Attribute Standard 1110 entitled organizational independence states that the chief audit executive must confirm to the board at least annually the organizational independence for the internal audit activity. In Wycomico County, the equivalent of the Board of Directors is the county council. In accordance with Attribute Standard 1110, I am pleased to provide the following declaration, that as chief audit executive for the Office of the Internal Auditor for Wycomico County, Maryland, I declare that to the best of my knowledge and belief, there have been no contraventions of auditor independence requirements or any applicable code of professional conduct in relation to the audits performed for Wycomico County.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor of Resolution 131-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motions carried, resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 132-2023. Hang on one second. Accepting the annual reports submitted by the county internal auditor, entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 132-2023.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
So, this annual report, it's for last fiscal year. It's before I joined, I joined in this fiscal year. However, there were two audit reports that were signed by the prior auditor, and they hadn't been submitted for resolution, so I thought it was prudent to create the annual report, include them in there. So his audits are in here. I also have some support documents. I can discuss anything that was of any concern. The two audits that are being submitted are for the MUNIS ERP audit and for the fuel audit.
Questions? You shared with us projects that were completed to a certain degree, and in there you noted adequate level and satisfactory level.
Yes.
So the adequate, I'm assuming, just doesn't quite meet the same standards as satisfactory, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So the MUNIS audit was to the highest level, the satisfactory level. The fuel audit was not. It was to an adequate level, and it is on the plan, which I will submit at the next council meeting, so I will be re-auditing fuel in the next year.
We passed the resolutions on the grant expenditures and miscellaneous expenditures, even though they were adequate level. I mean, that's going to happen regardless and try to move forward with it. So I guess there's no real intention this time to move, to revisit those two particular categories?
Not for grants. However, I will say that I do have a budget audit planned, and so part of that budget audit plan, it will be the review, but also an actual audit of expenditures. So it won't be a full-blown audit of grant expenditures, but I will sample some grant expenditures as part of the budget audit.
Okay.
And then for miscellaneous expenditures, even though we're not revisiting that in this fiscal year, fiscal year '24, I am doing a purchase card audit, and a lot of miscellaneous expenses are used with the purchase card, so...
Okay.
Should be covered.
Any other questions from anyone? I would only like to say, I really appreciate as much work as you've done in the short amount of time that you've been here, because this is, we wouldn't want to go into complete detail right now, as far as all the different programs and projects that you have been reviewing, but there's at least, I'm looking at at least 15 right here that you have already touched base with, and it's no easy task trying to accomplish that. So I'd like to commend you for that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. All those in favor of Resolution 132-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motions carried, resolution passes unanimously. And then you have one final item with the employee hotline update, right?
Yes. So this is an annual memo, and it's a very broad review of the hotline activity. We can't go into details because of confidentiality and such, but we did have one hotline call last fiscal year, and it was related to human resources.
So, that's not a real, that's not a really huge number, right? But we have to, I think we should acknowledge, especially for the public, that probably the very, a good reason for that, it wasn't really, it hadn't been maintained properly, I guess, and the information hadn't really gotten out, I think, to the employees satisfactorily. Would you say that's true, or...
I think part of it is that the internal audit position was vacant from January until I came on board. So for about half of the year, there wasn't an internal auditor, so I think that partly contributed. And then there could be something, I wouldn't say necessarily that it wasn't adequately maintained. There could be some enhancements and improvements to the program, and I'm definitely going to be looking at that as part of the fiscal year '24 review, improving the way the hotline is managed.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from anyone? All right, well, we appreciate you taking the time.
It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll look forward to continuing to work with you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on a second. I'm having a lot of trouble losing my place here tonight. Now a second. I'm having a lot of trouble losing my place here tonight. This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
Hey, good evening. I actually don't have a concern. I just wanted to come forward, and I wanted to thank Vice President Baker and Councilman Merritt and Councilman Nguyen for coming to my office to discuss the fire service agreement with the city. And I know, Ms. Chaney, you took a call from the city as well, so I do appreciate your input there. And I also wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to give you all just some props on the open work session. I'm really excited to see the letter of support for the tax subtraction on the death benefit. So on Friday, I was with Ben Barnes, who is the Chair of Appropriations for the House, and we were actually talking about this exact thing. So they're going to change the legislation, so I'm really happy that you are going to support that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, because I know we've, you know, had somebody suffer from that here in the county, so I'm happy to see that. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Executive.
Thank you.
Hi, my name, my name is Joe White. I'm from Wacomico County. At the last meeting, I, I came up and spoke about some of the concerns I had with the Parks Rec and Tourism Department, particularly with the park in the West Metro area. I attended the last Parks and Rec meeting, and I'm happy to say that I think that the county executive and Steve Miller have listened to the public feedback. I did want to say that right now that the plan has just been put back out on the website and is open for public comment, and they mentioned at the meeting that you all are, the council is going to have a work session. The, the changes they've made moving it more towards some of the soccer facilities that have been removed from the county in the last 15 years seem to, to coalesce with what the feedback was at the public hearings that the executive had. I know at that meeting, unfortunately, none of you were able to, to, to visit, and obviously you'll have a work session where you'll have a chance to answer a lot of your questions. The thing that I'm going to ask you to do is, in front of this meeting, is to prepare a list of stakeholders in the community that should be at your work session so that you can ask them from different angles, not from my angle. I live on the east side, and I, I do think it's an important part. We have, we have Winter Place Park on our side for the last 22 years, and it's been a big asset, but we just want to make sure it's used properly and the tax dollars are spent well. So my only ask from you is, is if this meeting's going to happen in October, because it sounds like that's when they were done in for it, that's mere weeks away, is reach out, if you need to reach out to me, or, we need to reach out beyond just the people in the Parks and Rec Commission. I mean, they, more people need to be there.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Casey Taylor. I am a homeowner in Shadow Hills Development and president of Shadow Hills Homeowners Association. Our development is located off of Conley Mill Road in Delmar, Maryland. I spoke at the last council meeting on September 19th regarding the advertisement on a Facebook post about the safari at the quarry with a 274 acres of trails, obstacle fields, hangout areas. The post continued that it's without a doubt the perfect gathering location for family, friends, and off-road enthusiasts. Like I spoke at the last meeting, we are against this facility for the four-wheeling ATVs and dirt bikes. Many of our property owners overpaid for our properties to be in the natural setting, away from all the hustle and the bustle that we could have had in other neighborhoods. Since speaking at the last council meeting, the county executive's office reached out regarding our concerns. We learned that the county's executive office signed into an MOU agreement with Live Wire Media LLC on September 2nd, 2023. We were able to obtain a copy of this MOU, and after reading it, there were several concerns as homeowners and tax-paying citizens with this MOU. On September 28th, we had a meeting with Julie Giordano, Bunkie Lofman, Bob Harris, and there was another gentleman that I did not catch his name. Also in attendance was Bill Harden, Tim Renter, Scott Taylor, and myself. After much discuss, discussion, we decided that it would, that we would write up a list of items that we would like amended to this MOU. As the MOU is presented, there is no mention, or very limited information was given of the following. There was no mention in this MOU of how the noise would be controlled. It's our recommendation that no modified exhaust or engines, only stock. As it stands, events can happen seven days a week. Events, we would like to see that events only be held on the weekends, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It does state in there that it's 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but it doesn't list just weekends. It does not clearly state what securing the site means. We would like to see it secured year-round. It does not list how many events will be held. We would like to see a max of three for this one-year agreement. It does not list the type of vehicles allowed. We would like it to detailed list of type of vehicles that would be allowed at these events. Only street-registered vehicles, no quads, no ATVs, and no dirt bikes. We would like to have, under one of the events, it's called quads at the quarry. We would like that to be removed, and that goes back to my last item, no quads at the quarry. There's no mention of that alcohol cannot be used at this event. There are vendors that are allowed to set up. I was told that it's a county function and that they would have to obtain a liquor license. I don't think when you're riding vehicles, you should be serving alcohol. There was no noise control, so we're saying no amplified music systems. We would like vehicles and vendors will maintain a safe and legal distance from neighbor, neighboring dwellings as required by the Maryland Code. We would like notification, or, we would like to notify the surrounding developments of events one month before the events take place. So that was just on the side of Live Wire. Then it had a list of what the county is to provide, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of this, but it says that the county is to provide manpower, equipment to assist with setups. No mention of reimbursement to the county. Manpower and, we believe that manpower and equipment hours used for this event should be documented and charged to Live Wire. It also states that personnel to manage off-site traffic flow. Will Live Wire cover this cost? That's your police departments and so on. It also states that, states that the county shall receive 10% of the net profit of this, each event. It does not state that Live Wire needs to provide, it does state that Live Wire needs to provide a report to the county about events, including accounting of revenue and expenses. But what if Live Wire does not, not make a net profit after this event? Then the county gets nothing. Is the county okay with this? Or should there be a set amount rental fee for this property and see how things go the first year? This will bring in money to local businesses, but feel like any other facility in the county charges a rental fee. So should Live Wire be charged? These amendments were sent to the county executive's office on, or October 2nd. We feel that these are not unrealistic amendments to the MOU, and they're in the best interest of the citizens and taxpayers of Wacomico County. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor, would you be able to provide a list of your comments to Mrs. Hurley at some point in time?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Scott Taylor, her husband. She's my wife, something like that. I wasn't going to speak because she covered it pretty much, but as not the president of the association, just a homeowner and citizen of the county, my main concern with that property is, you know, we came to support the county taking it over as a borrow pit for the landfill many years ago. My main concern is with this event coming in, is the after-hours people that it's going to attract. I feel like it's being advertised now, and people are seeing it and saying, hey, we've got a place to ride. We've got a place to go. And I'm not against people having a place to ride. I just don't want to hear it all the time, much as you all wouldn't want to hear it in your backyard. I can hear music on Saturday mornings from Parker Complex when softball teams are warming up in the morning. Just from their little boombox, we can hear it loud and clear. I heard four-wheelers and motorcycles back there yesterday while I was out in my backyard. I don't want to hear it all Saturday and all Sunday long, where we're trying to enjoy our yard. And my fear is, and a lot of our homeowners fear, is that's what we're going to hear outside of these events that Live Wire wants to put on, that we are now advertising it and inviting people to come. The Jeeps have rode back there. People are going to say, hey, if I could go back there on, on, you know, July 14th for the event, why can't I go back other times and ride that? Why can't my kids bring their four-wheelers? Why can't we bring our dirt bikes? And they're going to be doing that outside of Live Wire on the weekends at 2:30 in the morning, which we've heard before, and, and at other times. So that is our main concern, and that's one of the reasons Casey had in there about securing the site. Live Wire said they're going to secure the site, and we said, well, what does secure mean? Does that mean I put up one sign that says no trespassing, and they call that secure? Nothing was in the MOU about what secure means. To me, secure might mean a six-foot fence, you know, with razor wire around the entire property. That's probably unrealistic, but maybe that's what secure means to me, to keep people out. So that is, that is my main concern with the property. We're opening up a big can of worms and saying, you know, come one and come all. In our meeting, somebody did mention the notorious dirt bikes and four-wheelers that ride down 13 and all around, you know, the city and county illegally, and they said, well, that would, might be a good place for them to ride, you know? And my answer, my, my question was, how are they going to get there? They're not going to trailer those bikes there, and, and I don't want to hear them, but they're going to be riding on the road illegally to get there. That group will. So again, that is just my main concern about this property, and I hope that, I know the county council doesn't have much to do with it right now, but I hope you consider that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Harden. I've been living in Shadow Hills Development for like 16 years. I've seen a number of MOUs written in my former job as state trooper for 25 years, chief of police, you know, in a certain city. And the MOU that I viewed that was written up by the county executive, to me, does not appear to be, and I'm not an attorney. It just doesn't appear to be legally sufficient or legally sound. Most MOUs, as, as a lot of us know, is simply an agreement. You're disagreeing that, hey, I want to do this, you want to do that, let's get together and do it. That's my first concern. My second concern is, for 16 years, as long as I've been living there, we have been dealing with dirt bikes, quads, ATVs, UTLs, all the years we've been living there. And you sit on your deck, and you want to, you know, have a cookout or watch the football game, forget about it. All you're going to hear is those engines revving up back there all day long. So you call the police, one, one agency says it's not our property. The other agency says it's not our property. And then when you do get an officer to come at that particular time, they would leave, the riders would actually leave, some of them actually had scanners, because I've been back there and caught them. They've had scanners, and once the officers leave, they come right back and just carry on as they normally did. So saying that, in addition to what's written in COMAR, which some of you may be familiar with, COMAR definitely states that dirt bike noise riding legally but too close to neighboring homes is a violation. It's a $10,000 fine per day if that can be proven. Here again, this is something that I know the county didn't have much involvement in, but I defer to you regarding any of the legality of the MOU. I don't know if that's something you can do or not. I'm not familiar with politics that much, law enforcement politics, but not this kind. So in presenting my comments to you, that's my concern. This has been something that's been ongoing for so long, and to have it just unknowingly thrown right back at us, just out of the blue, is an insult. I received that as an insult. I think it could have been handled a lot better, and even with the, the addendums that we did for some of the things that were listed in that MOU, that's still not satisfying to me. If it, if it were up to me, I prefer we don't have any events back there. I prefer what Bob Carter told me, bless his heart, before he passed, that he was going to turn it into a park, and you could ride your bike, maybe a little lake back there. Those are the things that I'm concerned with. I yield to my wife, who's coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Harden.
Good evening. I'm Denise Harden. I am resident of Shadow Hills by way of being married to Bill Harden. I've also been in the community for 16 years, and we have dealt with the noise that comes from dirt bikes, quads, four-wheelers, pickup trucks that get stuck. Our backyard pretty much backs right up on the pit. 3 o'clock in the morning, music, yeah. Barrel fires, yeah, calling the fire department because people back there got cold, and so they, I don't know what they're putting in the barrels. Once, my husband actually went back and filmed, and they had barrel fires. I just want to say that I was extremely pleased and excited when I heard that the county was going to be taking that over. Prior to that, I'm an attorney, and prior to that, I had started to identify the various property owners, because it was parceled up pretty good. The purpose of me identifying the property owners is because I was going to put together a suit. Their property, they should be policing it, controlling it. It's their responsibility. But then I heard the county took it over, and I can't tell you how, I was just over the moon when I heard that. By comparison, I am extremely disappointed to hear that there's a plan now to put dirt bikes back there. We, our neighborhood pushed, we wanted this to happen. We wanted the county to take it over so that we could get rid of this problem. In addition to that, I looked forward to having a park, biking trails, walking trails, and I was going to approach the county about a pickleball court, because I would like to have pickleball courts in the county. I was even thinking about, how can I get the county, once they're done putting up the park area, to knock the trees down from the park to my backyard so I could just walk through and, and, and access that area? That didn't happen, but I, I'm still hoping that it will at some point. I, I just want to tell you that for us in the community, the noise is intolerable. We would be on our deck, and we'd go inside in the summertime and close the doors. You can still hear the noise. We have a finished basement, so we would go down into the basement. So now we're literally underground, and you can still hear the noise. There's just no getting away from it. I, someone said something about security and how that's going to work. When we did identify some of the property owners, we approached them about putting up signs, in which they agreed that we could do that said no trespassing. We, we spent the money, put up the signs, they took them down. They took the signs down. So you, there's a possibility that no matter what kind of security you have, there's always going to be people coming in who don't think that that security applies to them. So again, I, I'm with the community. Tonight, we came out with a small contingent, because we're still trying to feel this situation out and understand what's possible, what's not possible, and what we can do about it. But, you know, at future meetings, that contingency may be a little larger, because there were many of us, neighbors would start calling each other. What can we do? What can we do? What can we do? So. What can we do? So again, we have, we see this as a problem. We feel like our backs are kind of up against the wall, and when your backs are up against the wall, there's nothing to do but fight your way back out. And we're hoping that we can get, we can work on this, and this doesn't become a disaster that many of us think that it will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Hello, everybody. From dirt bikes to dogs. While Andy's passing out these packets I made for you, I'm going to remind everybody of what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
The concert.
This recording is, again, three football fields, three football fields away from the dogs. So I've divided this up into three situations.
Could you just state your name?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Dan Beebe, Sussex County, Delaware, just on the other side of the line of Wacomico County from Sharp Town down near Cherry Beach.
Thank you very much.
I've divided this up into three sections: our position, what the lady who owns the kennel was saying, and then what we've experienced with the county. I want to try and run through it as quickly as I can. A kennel business has been set up outside of legal zoning. The volume and consistency of the noise generated by the dogs on the property creates a clear nuisance and disturbance of the peace, as well as an unwanted effect on the homeowner's quality of life. Zoning is currently A1 agricultural, which requires, should this be considered a commercial kennel, which is in dispute. It requires a special exception per the articles that I've attached in the attachment behind. There are 50 to 60 dogs on the property of the same breed that Willow Run advertises as they are a breeder of. To my opinion, this alone should trigger commercial, 50 or 60 dogs on a piece of property. There is more than enough proof to show that indeed a commercial enterprise is designed to turn a profit, and I'm going to turn to the pictures that I've provided you in this packet. You'll see the business card that she promotes her business with. You'll see two lovely-looking puppies in a red wagon. When you look at that picture, in the back left-hand corner of that picture, upper-left-hand corner of that picture, you'll see an enclosed trailer with some red debris in front of it. Another picture here shows a shopping cart in the background. And then this third picture showing the building and the fencing is our picture that we took. If you'll notice off to the right-hand side of that building, you see that same enclosed trailer. And then another picture of the enclosed trailer, picture of a puppy in the same shopping cart that was in the other. So basically, long story short there, we've shown that the pictures that she's using via the picture that I've provided that says Willow Run Kennels LLC, where you see the advertisement, beautiful yellow and chocolate lab puppies, call for more details. Those pictures were taken on this property, yet planning and zoning is telling me that this is not a commercial business. There's also a Google Earth of where all the houses are versus the dogs, and you'll see a petition for the dogs. So what Willow says, after visiting, planning, and zoning, and educating herself, Dorothy Carter decided that those were her dogs. They weren't a business. There is no money-changing hands on the property, is her argument. There is no activities on the property that support a commercial business, is her statement. Willow has filed for a special exception that is required for the zoning on the commercial via Article 225. However, she has postponed and postponed and postponed again because she's realized that as long as the county is with her, planning and zoning, that she's not a commercial business, that she doesn't need the special exception. So why even bring that into the fray when you don't need it? The county's position, Animal Control, they cannot write additional citations until the previous one is adjudicated. This is where we have just absolutely, we just don't understand. If a drunk driver gets caught on a Friday, he's going to get put back on the road until that's adjudicated, and if he gets caught on the following Monday, he's going to get arrested again. Why are we limited, and why are our hands tied behind our back that only one citation? It absolutely stops us from being able to show a judge when we do go to court that it's not just a one-day problem. When that citation is written, it's given a date, and the judge sees it as a one-day problem, okay? And the minute we bring up it's a multiple-day problem, it's, the lawyer says that we're not talking about that, we're talking about the day that the citation was written, and we get closed off. We should be able to have multiple citations. If we can prove that those dogs are barking, we should be able to get a citation written for that from Animal Control. According to Animal Control, that's per the county attorneys have told them, and I believe the reason behind it, what they were told behind it, is let's make sure the problem is a problem before we go overloading the court. And I can understand that, but we've got two guilty verdicts, and they still won't write multiple citations. Willow has explained, they transport dogs to and from a Delaware location. Dogs are being well taken care of. I have witnessed the opposite. Two dogs showed up in my yard. One who looked like she had recently had a litter, had matted feces in her fur. There have been three citations since January 23. Two have been adjudicated with two guilty verdicts. Animal Control mixed message on multiple citations. One minute, they're telling me they can write more if I get guilty verdicts, the next minute, they're saying they can't. Planning and zoning, we have made multiple visits and have found Dorothy Carter to be operating out, not found Dorothy Carter to be operating outside of her A1 zoning. Clark Meadows, I have consulted with the county attorneys, and they are of the opinion she is not operating outside of her zoning parameters. There must be money-changing hands to be considered a commercial business. Well, Amazon warehouses don't change money in there, hands, any kind of manufacturing plants, most of that money gets changed hands either on the internet or through the offices that are off those locations. So by saying that money must change hands means that Amazon warehouse on a piece of property is not a commercial business. That's above me. County Attorney Chris Smith, I've had multiple conversations with him, the decision as to whether they are operating outside zoning lies with planning and zoning. When I ask planning and zoning, it lies with the county attorney. The decision for one citation at the time lies with Animal Control. When I ask Animal Control, it's what they're told by the county. When I was in my early 20s, I DJed Sharp Town Bar. Lady hired me, and it weren't too long before we upset the neighbors. The neighbor, and the Wacomico County Sheriff's Department came in, and they gave me the "turn it down" sign. It got to the point where we couldn't even run the music louder than the jukebox. That lady went out of business. She owned a bar that was commercially zoned, but she owned a bar that was too close to residences, and they were able to call the county sheriff's department and shut us down. We cannot call the county sheriff's department, tell the dogs to shut up. So we're at a disadvantage where that's concerned. So, and my question is, what is the purpose of zoning if it's not there to protect our Special exception hearing going on to operate without it if they can get away with it. That's basically, even if Clark Meadows was to see it our way, and what's he going to do? He's going to go out there and try and get her in compliance. And if she's already misleading the county and the zoning committee, that's what she's going to continue to do. She's going to make things look good while Clark and his bunch there, and then she's going to go back to business as normal. And of course, she's also evading the taxes. So what I'm here to do is hopefully maybe attract some champions amongst you guys, some of you guys that can champion us on this, and what other means are available to the council. The commercial word in the 225 zoning, it needs to be clarified. What is commercial? Allow more than one citation. If there's anybody in here that's got leverage where that's concerned, that we can get more than one citation written so that we can show a judge it's an everyday problem and not just a one-day problem. Can you do something with the zoning? When you read, and I'm closing up now, I know I'm running a little long here, but if you read this, "A commercial kennel, A1, 22599, they must have five acres, not be located within 200 feet." 60, I believe something in there should be about the amount of dogs that is acceptable. And then you just heard a recording from 300 yards, three football fields away, 200 feet, a commercial kennel from a residential home. Wow. And then my understanding is, there may be a law that you guys are considering, I would consider it an enough is enough law. If somebody gets so many citations and they're found guilty of those citations, can we not have an enough is enough law that allows you guys to stand in and say, that's it? You've had plenty of chances to rectify this situation, you have not, and step in with a little bit firmer hand to maybe force them to do so? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beebe.
Thank you.
Can I, is your information in here?
No, but I can provide it to you before I leave.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can tell you another, Jeff has all my information. Has my email. Him and I have talked together on several occasions. So by all means.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.